Call the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order, please. Call roll.
Mrs. Cahoon? Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Excuse me. A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening are citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board your questions, comments, or concerns this evening. We're starting a new practice, re-instituting an old practice, a new again. There's a honey, but Goldenrod pages back in the back. If you have any questions that you want, wish response to, please fill that out so we have the questions correct, your name and address correct. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your comments. We ask that you come to microphone, state your name and address. Also, that you may not receive a response to particularly inquire this evening. Last, but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
Hi, my name is Paul Shepherd. I live at 34 Scott Boulevard. I'm a 1992 graduate of Mount Clemens High School, and until May 5th, I was the administrative assistant to the superintendent. I would have liked to have continued on this path for many more years, evidence that my daughter was enrolled here since third grade, and I recommend that Mount Clemens has a great place to work to family and friends. Among those I referred was my wife Jennifer. She was the high school secretary since 2020. In the meeting, in the minutes of a regular meeting in September, she was recognized by the superintendent for her work in making the last back-to-school bash possible. Besides Mrs. Monk, I will contend that nobody did more to make sure this event took place. Not noted that Jennifer did this task while the principal and guidance counselor had resigned, and summer school quickly turned into a job for teachers who were also planning their exit before the school year. The superintendent went to Iceland for two weeks, and there was only a fill-in for her one of those weeks. I was given a sticky note with Mike DeWaltz and Alicia Fly's phone number for emergencies as instructions for how to work that week with no administration present. Jennifer was the only person in her office and handled enrollments to the secondary complex by herself while handling day-to-day operations of summer school. The high school was soon given a series of inexperienced guidance counselors followed by an inexperienced principal. Jennifer was introduced by the principal by being invited to her interview along with the MCAA president. Jennifer and the MCAA president always said she did not think that the principal candidate would be a good fit when asked by the assistant of curriculum and human resources, not knowing she was the only candidate and friends with the assistant superintendent. This began a brief but tense working environment that soon turned hostile. Also affected was our choice to enroll our daughter in another district due to there being no evidence of any plan for security at the secondary complex this year, where she would have began the seventh grade. One of these security guards quickly hired after the year began, along with her daughter, threatened the secretaries in the office on the morning of October 14th, with the principal as one of the witnesses. When it became clear that she would not do anything to make sure this incident did not happen again, the secretaries went to the superintendent as the complaint was against their own supervisor. The superintendent assured them that she would handle things, and on Wednesday, October 19th, there was a staff meeting for their office. That meeting turned into an effort to intimidate and threaten the female employees into silence by the director of people accounting, as the principal watched on. It was also made clear that human resources was told not to attend this meeting, and that if any complaint was made again, the one issued the complaint would be fired. That same evening, despite everything, Jennifer chose to put aside her own needs and put the students' needs first by bringing to your attention that there were students who were not yet issued Chromebooks, after she brought this to the principal's attention numerous times. The superintendent, after the meeting, told Jennifer that she would not, she should not have made this complaint. Despite teachers and parents thanking her for trying to do something about this, and that I have evidence that even over a month later, there was still an issue with Chromebooks, Jennifer was told by edge of staff to not return to the district for not following the chain of command.
Thank you for those comments, sir.
Hello. My name, my name is Spencer Cahoon. I live at 27 Valley Drive, apartment 204, Mount Clemens. I'm here today, and I'm wearing orange because on June 2nd, 2023, that's National Gun Violence Awareness Day, more than 120 people are killed with guns every day in the United States. It's absolutely ridiculous. And so today, on your agenda, there is a resolution for We're Orange Day, and I hope you all will pass it. This is such an important issue, and other, other local governments and school boards are passing resolutions just like this. They have been for years, so I hope you'll join them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Shepherd. I live at 34 Scott Boulevard, and I want to give my three minutes. Back to Paul Shepherd, please.
Needless to say, policy should have protected Jennifer from making a citizen comment, and policy should have been filed due to the report of a hostile work environment. An investigation began only after Jennifer was removed from her position by edge of staff. Being removed from her position was not enough for this administration, unfortunately. Jennifer received more than one email from her employer over the course of the next week saying she needed to stop communicating with district employees, despite the fact that they were reaching out to her. That was also not enough for this administration. As our friends' children were pulled from their classes and their phones confiscated to see if they too had been communicating with my wife, only after my report to you following policy, did the administration make an attempt to replace the compliance officers that should have been available to make a report to, even though Mr. Monk had urged them to do some months earlier. Cooperation was expected with the real possibility that those who might tell the truth were risking losing what Jennifer had, including a board-approved retention bonus and the prospect of losing their own jobs just before the holidays. This investigator called edge of staff demanding her contact information and refusing to identify himself as anything other than retard investigations, not clarifying that Jennifer was not the target of the investigation. Jennifer later asked how she was not assigned to another district after weeks during a national shortage in education staff, and edge of staff would only say off the record that sometimes districts talk to each other. Needless to say, the superintendent got a month paid vacation while my family scraped by. God blessed us despite what the rift between the administration had made it impossible for me to continue to perform my job to the best of my abilities. And heaven forbid, any other policies were violated, I might have hesitated to report it, knowing what had happened to my own wife. I hope to return to the district in some form or another in the future, as I foresee a change for the better coming under the leadership of Julian Roper. I would like to thank this board and Teresa Davis for the opportunity to serve the district.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Estina Wallace. I live at 124 Bellevue, and I'm actually here on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for Macomb County. I wanted to publicly thank you, especially Assistant Superintendent David Lavender for partnering with me and working with the county to bring back high school internships. We are the only school right now that has been welcomed back into the county. We have two students that are working with the county clerk currently, and I'm just very appreciative of just being allowed to sit down and bring this idea to the school board and to David, and thankful that the clerk allowed us to come in and have currently two students there. I am in talks with other departments because the clerk has just praised the two girls that are there currently, and they have been doing a great, great job in representing Mount Clemens wonderfully. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, and be sure to cheer on the, the girls that are in the county representing you all now. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Hello, my name is Kiara Smith. I live at 20011 Boylan. That's in Roseville. I just wanted to quickly just say I work at Seminole as a gym teacher, and I have noticed the changes that has happened since Principal Bethel has been there. This school year has been very, very positive to me. I just feel like the environment has changed for the better. And people normally turn their nose up when they see their boss or go the other way, but not with Ms. Bethel. She is so personable. Anytime you have to call off, she is understanding. She's sending you encouraging words, and it's something that you don't really get often from your boss. And furthermore, she's sort of been like a mentor, honestly. She encouraged me to get back into school to pursue my master's in education, so I'll be doing that in the fall. And anytime she is, anytime I need something, she's very responding with my emails or anything that I need. So I just hope that Principal Bethel gets a fair chance at coming back to Seminole next year, and that's all.
Thank you for those comments. Agenda is still open for citizens comments.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is, my name is Edry Mann. I live at 346 Huntington. That's Mount Clemens. I was at the board meeting a couple of months ago, and I was here to speak on behalf of Seminole Academy. It was my children's first year there. It has been an amazing experience. I think I shared before, I have a 23-year-old stepdaughter and 18-year-old stepson and two little ones. We've been through six elementary schools. Seminole Academy is something special. Until I was at the March Board meeting, I had no idea what was going on behind the scenes, and I am completely devastated to find out that politics, racism, and things of this nature are happening in our school. Ms. Bethel has done an outstanding job. I have spoken with other parents about the mess that Seminole Academy was last year, and I will tell you, I have seen none of it. I have seen smiling teachers. I have seen no parents fighting, you know, in the parking lot, which I guess was a thing according to the sheriff. Every single morning, we pull up and we see teachers and staff members walking up to our kids, greeting them, hugging them, hello. You know, if there's a behavior thing, they take care of it. If, if it's, you know, they need reading support, they take care of it. Ms. Bethel faced 15 new teachers while being a new principal, and apparently, like I said, a parking lot disaster and some other politics that shouldn't be going on, especially in 2023. I feel she's done an outstanding job. I feel my children are happier than any of my four children have ever been at Seminole Academy, and I just would like to speak on her behalf. If she's up for it, I would love to see her back next year. Something else I wanted to speak to, I came for the new superintendent interviews, and one of the things I kept hearing about Mount Clemens and our district over and over again is this downtrodden, poor kids, all of this trauma in their background. I love Mount Clemens. I've been here since my twenties, and I don't see our community that way at all. I'm sure there are some kids who are going through things, just like there are everywhere, just like there are at Lance Cruz and Chippewa and Dakota. There's people in our neighborhood that are paying $7,000 to $10,000 a year in taxes. Like, this is a good neighborhood, and I wish just that the school would be opened up to everybody and be represented as Mount Clemens and not, you know, the school that everybody needs to exit, you know. So I appreciate it. Again, Ms. Bethel, you've done a great job with the majority of the students in the entire district, and I hope it continues to grow because I really love our city and I want to keep my kids here. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Good evening, everyone. This is Andre Fullwood, pastor of the Gatekeepers Church in Mount Clemens, Michigan. I live at 37140 Bryantford Drive, apartment 201, Clinton Township, Michigan. Also work as a behavior specialist over at Seminole. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but my, my heart's desire is we need to pray. We, we need to pray because all of us here who take the time out to come here, those of you who voted to be on the board, it's all about the kids. It's the bottom line. Whether we like each other or not, we should be able to still get along. But it's the kids. It's the kids who come to you in the behavior room, not because they have behavior issues, because they want to spend time, because there's relationships, because you're able to talk to them with coping skills and how to deal with their anger. And then you find out that a lot of these things stem from the environment that they come from. And so I don't label them as bad kids. We've already inherited something as we were growing up as kids, and a lot of us have fought through it. A lot of us have become successful. God didn't bring me back home where I'm an 82 graduate, broke football records, all these other things. Well, that's fine and dandy, 40 years ago. But I'm here to make a difference. The church is here to make a difference, and we need to really look within ourselves and say, am I really doing the best for the kids? Because that's who's important here, so that they can get the best education, the best support system, from counselors, from social workers, to behavior interventions, whatever the case is. And even though my contract is up next month, I'm still going to be a part. I'm still going to be influential in this community. But as a whole, as I look at my colleagues, union, non-union, doesn't matter. If you're in Mount Clemens or in this community where you have a purpose, let's reevaluate what that purpose is, and let's get on together to make sure every kid, because there's kids that are struggling. There are kids who don't have the clothing, don't, maybe don't have washing machine to dry, because we can tell by the way they smell. Let's be honest. But it's not their fault. So we need to do more. We need to, we have to do more. And so that's my say. And I'm gonna concur, you know, my voice has already been known, with Ms. Smith-Johnson. Ms. Bethel's been great. I get along with everybody. So, because that's, that's my responsibility as a child of God. God bless you.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens comments.
Hello, everyone. Roxanne Brown, 590 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, and I'm a 1973 grad of Mount Clemens High School. Like Reverend Fullwood, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I feel just spirit-led, and I just want to echo what's been said by a few people. As a substitute teacher at Seminole, primarily this whole year, just stopped a few weeks ago because I had to take a break and do some things with my mom, and as a substitute teacher back in 2019, when I just had gotten into the field, I think I've said this many times, it's a stark contrast. There was no control over situations when I first started teaching at Seminole, and it was, there were so many disruptions that new teachers didn't stand a chance. I was put in a classroom once with a new teacher who was trying to test, and I was trying to help other students with their math, and it was so much chaos with the young people being young people who hadn't been bridled and disciplined, that I walked down to the principal's office and asked him to come in, and he walked through the classroom, and the students mocked him and ridiculed him and laughed at him, and he left. And it was the same as if he hadn't even come. Mrs. Bethel has not only restored a sense of structure and order, she is competent, caring, and committed. Those are my three Cs that I like when I sub: competent, caring, and committed. And she has a wonderful staff of people there, teachers that have been there a while, teachers who have come in new. And one thing I can say about the teachers that she brought in, they, those teachers didn't know Mount Clemens at all. They didn't know the culture out here. They didn't have any friends here. They came and they saw students that were exactly like the students they had left in Detroit, and they rolled up their sleeves and they did the work. And they're changing things because that's the kind of teachers they are. I looked closely and I observed, and those are the kinds of teachers that Mrs. Bethel was able to find. And like Reverend Fullwood, I think people are going to have to learn to work together because it's all about the students, and we have so much trauma among our students. Yes, they do come to school not just with their clothes not washed, they smell like smoke. Some of them, their coats are just reeking of smoke, and it's not always cigarette smoke. So there is a lot going on with some of the students in Mount Clemens, and we need to be able to work together for the sake of these young people who I have seen, when they are nurtured and taught well, they respond well, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ebony Douglas Armstrong. I live at 7388 West Otter Drive, Detroit, Michigan, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Mrs. Bethel. I believe that she exemplifies leadership. I've come in from the Detroit Public School System, and I have taught there for over 25 years, so I know that she is very warming. She's there to greet the staff as well as the kids. She doesn't just delegate jobs to other people. She's out there doing them herself. So bus duty, she participates in bus duty. She's there at every, just about every after-school activity since I've been there. She speaks kind words to the kids. The kids are running up to her every morning, giving her hugs, and I do believe that we need to have a collective community at our school because it takes a village to raise these children that we have. And I feel that the environment of the children that are before me are similar to the Detroit system that I have. Almost 80% of the kids are urban kids, and they experience the same things of experience. So I drive 40 minutes a day to make a difference with the kids that are before me in Mount Clemens. I'm very dedicated. I come because it's a smaller district, but we have the same issues, and these kids have to be taught. They have to be cared for. They need to know that they are loved. And so it's not just the people who make the difference, it's what you pour into the kids. And the more that you pour into them, the more you get a return. So when you see that the kids' scores are going up, you have to have employees who are willing to make a difference, who want the best for the children that are before them, and that's why I come each day. Ms. Bethel has been very encouraging. Everything that I needed, she has provided. She has made several opportunities for us to come together by feasting together, different celebrations that she has provided for us. So I just want to say that I do believe that she is making a difference. Usually, one year is just not really enough, that generally people are given a couple of years to make a difference because you're coming after somebody else, and changes need to be made. So I would love for her to give an opportunity to have at least another year so that we can see her growth, the growth that I see in her and I see in the students within the school. Thank you much.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens comments. Hearing or seeing none. Moving the agenda forward, I would like to add, amend the agenda. One, to be, to add resolution to consider designation of electorate representative for the June 5th, 2023 MISD election meeting. That is, and I would like to put that as item 12 right behind the ISD budget, if it is so. Move by the board to amend the agenda to add to the agenda the resolution to consider designation of electorate representative for the June 5th, 2023 ISD election meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second by Ms. Collins. I heard her first.
No, it was Walker. It's Walker.
So y'all signing the line now? Okay, move by Ms. Walker to amend the agenda to add the resolution to consider designation of electorate representative for the June 5th, 2023 ISD election meeting. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Every, I think, two years, seats come available on the Macomb ISD board, and school boards that are a part of the ISD elect the board members. It's not a popular election where you go out and canvass. It's the election that school boards elect the representatives to the ISD board. And so what this resolution that, that's on, that's being added to the agenda is for this board to consider who the designated voter will be and the alternate for the June 5th meeting to cast a vote for the members of the ISD board. So that's the explanation of what, what the resolution is about, and we have to have this done prior to June 5th. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to amend the agenda? Seeing or hearing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. The agenda has been amended to add the resolution. Also, I would like to amend the agenda to add under 5B, B, under, let's see, it's 5B2, let's add a C, to ratification of the superintendent's contract. So I would.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member McFadden, what's it gonna be right here? Second by Member Walker, to add as under item 5B and make it a C, ratification of superintendent contract. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor to amend the agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Or is it Mrs. Walker? I just heard Walker. Oh, that was me. Yes. I'm sorry.
You get them both.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. Now, item 5, board recognitions. Tonight, we're recognizing the top six, is it top six, in the graduating class of 2023. I think last year, they were called the Fantastic Five or something. I call them the Sensational Six. I haven't heard, heard any, any phrase to them, so I, I'll just call them the Sensational Six, and I'd ask Principal McNilly to come up and present our honored students this evening.
Okay, so first I'd like to start with Isabella Foot, and I don't believe that she's here. Isabella is dual-enrolled at Macomb Community College. She will continue at Macomb next year, and her major is undecided. Our next graduate is Ukiah Sharet, and I don't think I saw her either. And I don't think I saw her either. Ukiah is an AP student. She is also dual-enrolled at Macomb. And she will be attending Wayne State for nursing in the fall. Our third senior is Wyatt Williams. And Wyatt is also an AP student. He also attends Pankow. And he will be attending Macomb as well for automotive. Next, we have Caleb Murphy. And I didn't see him either. He will be attending a trade school for HVAC or welding. And our next student is our salutatorian. That is Azalia Wallace. And I know I saw Azalia. Do you wanna come up? Azalia is our salutatorian. She will be entering University of Kentucky as a sophomore due to the number of classes she's taken as a dual-enrolled student here. And she will be studying animal science. And she is also an AP student. So congratulations. And the final, was it Fantastic Six or Sensational? Sorry, Sensational Six is Cheyana Patterson. And she's our valedictorian. I know I saw you. Cheyana attends Pankow as well. She is dual-enrolled also and does take AP classes. She will be attending Oakland in the fall for zoology and veterinary science.
Congratulations to those outstanding scholars. All of them are dual-enrolled and AP and stuff I couldn't even spell when I was in high school. That shows their commitment. Thank you to those parents and support system for these young people. Because as I often say, they didn't make it here on, by themselves. And so thank you for parents, guardians, all those people that supported these young people and kept pushing them to do the right thing. When you do good things, good things happen, happen to you. So congratulations to the six that were honored today. Even those that were not here, we offer our congratulations to the top six in the class of 2023. Next, we have, excuse me, Staff Teachers of the Year. I'd like to ask Principal Bethel to come forward and present the Seminole Academy Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. I've been chosen to present this prestigious award to Mrs. X to honor her as the 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year for Seminole Academy. Mrs. X has dedicated over 20 years of service to the children at Mount Clemens with pride and a smile. And for that, the Seminole community thanks you.
Congratulations to Miss X. I'd like to ask Principal McNeeley to come up and present the Mount Clemens Middle School and Mount Clemens High School Teachers of the Year.
The middle school teacher of the year is Michelle Kirkland. Ms. Kirkland has... Ms. Kirkland has a love of learning that she shares with her students. She's constantly searching for the newest and most engaging activities to implement in her classroom. She works diligently to prepare her students for life beyond school and career-focused learning like earning a paycheck, paying taxes, and running the Bath or Buck store. And we're so proud to recognize her as Teacher of the Year. Our high school teacher of the year is Daniello Richard. Mrs. Richard is able to joke with students and using, uses this to connect with them. She's worked hard on her methods to gain more authentic engagement with her students. She cares about the growth of all her students and makes sure they work with graphs, charts, maps, and writing essays as part of their daily routine. Mrs. Richards is a great example of an influential teacher. Congratulations.
I'd like to congratulate our teachers of the year. This is something that was voted on by their peers. So if your peers think that highly of you, it speaks volume of the character of the individuals that received this recognition this evening. So congratulations to all of our Teacher of the Year honorees. Next, retirees.
Madam Superintendent.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Neely, McNeeley, please to come and speak about a retiree from the Secondary Council, Marilla Lang, who was actually the very first person I met here when I came in. So...
Okay, do you wanna come up and as well? So, Marilla Lang. Mrs. Lang is an excellent collaborator and loves to make learning interesting and fun. She shows concern and empathy for her students and colleagues, forming positive relationships that stand the test of time. She's mentored new teachers over the year, including Mr. Slack, who warmly states that she was his first true teaching colleague and partner. He will miss their conversations, as will the rest of the staff and students. And we wish her the best as she takes her next step in her journey.
Thank you.
And before you sit down, Mrs. Bills, my colleague to the left, Member Walker, has a plant for you. In recognition of your retiring June 30th of this year, you've been superintendent for us for three years. And you were interim principal half a year or so prior to deciding to come out of retirement to take on the challenge of the superintendency. We appreciate your leadership and your service to the Mount Clemens Community School District. This rose plant just shows a small token of our appreciation for your service to the Mount Clemens Community School District. And if you finally retire, we wish you well in retirement.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor. I loved every minute here.
And I requested to move, amend the agenda so it wouldn't be at the end of the meeting. We just honored some retirees. And now we, the last time the board met, at the end of the superintendent search process, board was offered to, offer the position to Julian Roper, contingent upon a successful negotiation of the contract. We use the parameters and ranges that we, that the board empowered me as a president to take in the negotiations. And I would like to say, after successful negotiations, the chair would entertain a motion to ratify the contract with Julian Roper for the superintendent of the Mount Clemens Community School District beginning July 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Walker to ratify the contract with Julian Roper for the superintendent of the Mount Clemens Community School District effective July 1, 2023. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. Mr. Roper, would you come forward, please? We'd like to get your gift coming in. You're a member of the MC family. Congratulations. I take some...
I just wanna say thank you. I talked to Mr. Rickman not too long ago and to the community. I had a great time. I've been here now, my work has already begun. For those of you I had a chance to meet, I'm not gonna wait until July 1st. That's too far away. So I'm already in here now and working both places. I'm gonna be here as much as I can. I've seen a lot of great things around this school district already in the last two, the two days I've been here. So I'm very excited. I'm even more excited and encouraged now than when I, when I just, when I interviewed. So with that being said, like I said in the phone call, I'm ready to go to work. I'm excited. There's a lot of potential here. These kids deserve the best. The staff, these people who come every day and give their blood, sweat, and tears deserve the best. And I assure you that when I leave this place, if and when that ever happens, it'll be in a better place. And it won't be because of me, it'll be because of us. I just, I'll be, I'll be the person at the helm to be able to say, this is what we did. So I appreciate you trusting in me, giving me this opportunity. And I assure you, I won't let this community down. So, thank you.
We're going to take a brief recess. There are some refreshments. You can talk with the honorees, student honorees, staff honorees. So we're gonna recess for, board recess for 10 minutes. A 5, approval of the May 2nd, 2023 special meeting. A 6, approval of the May 11th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Work Session. Item 6B, approval of bills for payment. And are we having the policies under consent agenda tonight?
No, it should be for approval, it's second reading.
Yeah, they're...
It can be approved on this consent agenda. Okay, also, under consent agenda this evening, 6C, policies for the second reading. Policy 2623, student assessment revived. Policy 6325, procurement slash federal grants funds revived. Policy 8200, school safe, 8400. School safety information revived. Policy 8390, animals on district property revised. Policy 7540.02, web accessibility, content, apps, and services revived. Policy 7540.03, student technology, acceptable use, and safety revised. Policy 7540.04, staff, technology, acceptable use, and safety revised. Policy 8315, information management revived. Policy 1615, use of tobacco by administrators revived, revised, excuse me. Policy 4215. Did I miss one? Yep. Policy 3215, use of tobacco by professional staff revived. Policy 4215, use of tobacco by support staff revived. Policy 5512, use of tobacco by students revived, revised, not revived. Policy 7434, use of tobacco on school premises revived. Policy 9160, public attendant at school events revised. Those are the matters under the consent agenda this evening. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Support by Member Walker to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I just wanna state a correction. You said April 17th under item A4. It should be April 27th.
That was my cross-eyed, you know, read.
I know, you do it.
Whatever I said wrong, what Ms. Collins says corrected. Was April, which one did I say?
27th.
27th.
Okay, April, that's consent items, consent agenda item 6A, number 4, April 27th, 2023 special meeting. Thank you for that. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have a question on the tobacco use policies for students. Does that include vapes? Has it, does it, does it define tobacco?
I believe it does.
I think that's the, that's the part that's being revised.
Yeah.
I can go back and look at the...
1615. We'll find it. But I do believe that the change was because of vaping.
Okay.
Yep. Any lighted or heated cigar or pipe? Yeah, it's all in there.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented and corrected? Excuse me, hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, item 7, proclamation in support of gun violence awareness. There's a resolution that's in the board packet. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the resolution and proclamation in support of Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 2nd, the first Friday of June. And we're also in that, that resolution is support of this proclamation by wearing orange on that day.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor to approve the proclamation in support of gun violence awareness first Friday in June? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 8, rescind administrative guideline 2260B. Madam Superintendent.
So administrative guidelines, 2260B is extremely old and outdated. In addition, administrative, the actual policy, which is 2260, was recently updated on December 21st of 2022. So we just updated this policy. And what we are requesting is that we rescind policy, administrative guidelines, 2260B because it's redundant. Every single thing that's in this administrative guidelines is in the current policy that we just adopted.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item 8 to rescind the administrative guideline 2260B due to redundancy.
So moved.
Moved by Member McFadden.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to rescind administrative guideline 2260B? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item nine, curriculum and personnel committee, A, new hires. Madam Superintendent?
Well, I could also ask Mr. Lavender to talk toward, to this, um, we have one new hire.
Yes, um, this evening, we are recommending, uh, the hiring of Rebecca L., executive assistants, superintendent.
And the board.
And the board.
It's been recommended, the new hire of Rebecca L. as the administrative, um, what was it, administrative assistant? Executive assistant, superintendent, and the board.
You got it. And HR and everybody else.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Welcome to the family.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. She's been here.
Yeah, today is day two.
Hearing the scene none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Rickman?
Oh, am I supposed to vote? Yes, motion carries. See how long that happens. Glad, welcome aboard. Item 10, business and finance committee, A, purchase of iPads for kindergarten students. Madam Superintendent?
Uh, this is, um, the purchase of iPads for our kindergarten students. We are using Title I funds to purchase these. These are for the, for our little kids that they can use an iPad, but they're so used to using their fingers on a device instead of an, a mouse. So this will really help the curriculum for our kindergarten kids. We're spending our Title I money, and because board approval is needed for purchases over $5,000, we're bringing this to the board. The, um, PO is for $49,390. And this will be for every kindergarten and DK student, and we are purchasing 100 of them, 110.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item 10, purchase of iPads for kindergarten students.
So moved.
Moved by Jay Walker, second by Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Uh, we talked about this at the work session, uh, last week. And it's our understanding that those devices that they had are going to be moved up the chain to the middle school.
Absolutely.
They're gonna be wiped, you know, cleaned and whatever they need to do and, and provided to the middle school. So they're not just somewhere in a closet drawing, drawing dust. They will be utilized. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor regarding the purchase of iPads for kindergarten students?
Oh, to be a kindergarten again.
Yeah, right?
All I had was finger paint.
Hearing the scene none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11, 23, 2023 MISD budget resolution. In the board packet, there was a resolution, uh, regarding the ISD budget. If there's not any questions, concerns, uh, about anything, uh, in the IS, presented ISD budget, the chair to entertain a motion relative to approving the 2023 MISD budget resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Member McFadden.
Support.
Second, Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? I don't know, Ms. Collins, where, if you were able to go to that budget hearing?
I was not.
Okay. No big deal.
Okay.
There are, there's always another one. Any other questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing the scene none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item 12, the resolution to, uh, consider designation of electorate representative for the June 5th, 23 MISD election meeting. What we have to do is, uh, either nominate somebody or somebody nominate themselves that is willing to, uh, go to the ISD on June the 5th, to cast a ballot, uh, of electing, uh, voting for two candidates, uh, to serve on the MISD Board of Directors. So we'll open, is anybody willing to volunteer, or we'll start it that way? I'll volunteer. I've, I've served in this capacity in the past. I think I did a stellar job when I did it. I'm willing to step up and do it again.
Your horn is a little loud.
I'm in a board meeting. When nobody else is tooting their horn. No, it's just that I, you know, I, I would, I'd volunteer to, uh, be the delegate, uh, to cast the vote, the, cast the vote on behalf of the Mount Clemens Board of Education. Is there anybody who wants to be considered as the delegate in case I run in front of a bus and the bus turns over?
It's a bit morbid.
Yeah.
I said the bus turned over. I didn't say it hit me.
Put my name in the hat, I'll do it.
Okay.
Dr. McFadden?
Dr. McFadden has nominated himself as the alternate. Any add, any additional recommendations for the designated or alternate? Okay. Hearing the scene none, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution considering the designation of R.C. Rickman as the electorate representative of, of this board for the MISD biannual election meeting to be held on June 5th, 2023. And Dr. David McFadden as the alternate in the event of designated representative is unable to attend.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second by Member Jay Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing the scene none, call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. And at the conclusion, chairman, uh, this regular meeting, we will go into a special meeting, uh, to deal with the second part of the resolution. And that's where the board will determine who this board wants to, uh, select as the two, uh, who they want to cast the vote for, for the two, uh, out of the three candidates running for the position of the MISD, uh, Board of Directors. Let's see. Brings us to informational item, item 12, business committee, A, financial reports. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports? Hearing the scene none, going on to item 13, superintendent's comments. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to begin by thanking Merle Lang. Um, she's had a very long career here in Mount Clemens, and she'll be missed. She was at Seminole for a long time teaching elementary students, and she's been here in the middle school teaching science for many years. So she will miss, she will be missed, and I just want to say on a personal level, I'm gonna miss all of you. This has been fun. Teachers of the year, we have, what a dedicated group of just wonderful educators. I hope that they wear their warm vests and good health and happiness, keep up all the good work. Our teachers of the year are Mrs. X, Mrs. Kirkland, and Ms. Richard. Our student awards, the graduating seniors, you know, I always say this because I, I always say it's, this is the best class ever, but this is the best class ever. These are great kids. I would, um, like to especially have a shout out to Cheyona Patterson, Azalea Wallace, Wyatt Williams, Caleb Murphy, Isabella Foot, and Ukiah Sharet. It's been a learning experience for me, watching these kids grow into young adults, because I've been here for the last four years. So I've known most of them since they were in eighth grade, and it's been really fun. I wish them the best in every way. Well, school's almost over. Prom was last Friday, and the last day for seniors is this Friday unless they need to take exams. The senior barbecue is tomorrow. The kids are all excited about that, and so are the teachers. It's really a fun, um, day and a morning for all of them. The last day for the rest of our students is June 9th, and the year has honestly just flown by. It just seems like a minute ago. We were all coming in for August, remember that, and there was no power?
Yes.
For that first day, so...
That's my big presentation.
They missed your big presentation, so you'll have to do it twice next year.
Exactly.
Okay, um, so we've had a lot of new teachers this year, and I'm just proud to welcome all of them and our new administrators into our family. I'd like to welcome Mr. Roper. You're gonna love it here. Like, it just rubs off on you and you can't get away. So I, I hope you enjoy your career here and that it is long and happy. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Next, item 14, committee reports. Anything to add to the good or the cause? Mrs. Collins?
Business?
Business and finance, yes.
No, we didn't, I have a meeting last month because of the superintendent hiring. Um, we are gonna have a meeting in June, and I'm gonna request that that's in person, because we have a lot of information to go over.
Gotcha.
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Ms. Collins. No report from the community coalition and educational foundation?
We should have something soon, though, right? We'll talk to them.
I haven't heard from anybody. So...
We'll talk to them.
Yes, okay. Item C, curriculum personnel. Ms. O'Neal?
I am going to pass the mic over to Mr. Lavender.
I have really nothing to add other than what was presented at the workshop last week.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about summer school.
Okay, yeah, summer school.
And the summer programming.
Okay, good, yeah.
A little bit about HVAC.
Wonderful thing, thank you.
I got a question then about summer school.
Yeah.
Yeah, what about those programs? What, do you get a, uh, answer on what is being offered? From the, um, TCB?
I've reached out to the YMCA, and I'm looking at other opportunities.
Okay, and any, anything from the other individuals, or you still working on that piece? TCB in the city of Mount Clemens?
Still working on it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. O'Neal, Mr. Lavender. E, policy, anything to add? We just had a whole bunch of policies go through.
We have 14 policies that were revised and second reading. Pretty sure we're gonna have a conversation with Neola probably in the next couple of months before the school...
Yeah, usually there's a, a big, a big group of them in September, October.
Yep.
Something to look forward to.
Oh, boy, how fun.
More policies, yep.
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Again, the legislative committee, uh, it conflicts with our work session, uh, date, and I opt to come to our work session, uh, dates as opposed to go to the legislative, uh, committee, uh, the county legislative committee. Um, I don't know if there's anything that the superintendents didn't talk about, basically the same things.
Right.
Any questions on the chair? I didn't go to the meeting.
And I wasn't able to go to the superintendent retreat because I was too sick, so I don't have that half of it, so...
Which takes us to item 15. Board comments. Mrs. O'Neal?
Um, I just want to, um, thank everybody. Um, I just, again, I want to, um, thank the, the public that came. We do hear your comments. Um, we just want to take note of that, that we do hear you. And we want to congratulate, I want to congratulate the Sensational Six, um, for the awesome job. The dual enrollment and all that, that they are doing is just, it's an awesome, awesome thing. Um, congratulations to our, um, teachers of the year, our retirees, congratulations to them. Welcome, Ms. L. to the family, and thank you, Mr. Roper, for accepting the position. And, um, welcome. So, and, um, I heard that the prom wa, went off, um, very well, and everybody was beautiful and all good things. I heard some wonderful things, so, um, I look forward to the graduation coming up and summer school. A lot of good things is happening here, so that's my comments. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Mr. Walker?
I want to thank the public for coming out and giving us your feedback and comments. We don't take those lightly. I'd like to give a big congrats to our Sensational Six. I know what it feels like to be in that position.
Yeah.
Congratulations to our, um, her valedictorian. She will be attending my now alma mater. Just get ready to walk up and down those hills. There, yeah, there, tiring. Also, I'm looking forward to graduation and attending that. I'd like to say a big congrats to our teachers of the year. I was lucky to have Ms. Richards for road history and keyboarding, with those blue boxes, not seeing your fingers. Very interesting. Um, and congrats to our retirees. I had Ms. Lang at Seminole for sixth grade science, and also, um, in position of helping out with the morning broadcast with Dr. McFadden's daughter for our morning show every morning. It was quite fun getting out of class for the morning, just saying. And seniors, look forward to your new journey that you're going to embark on, and don't look back.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Collins?
Uh, I want to say congratulations to the Sensational Six. Um, those are outstanding accomplishments. You represent our school district well. Uh, I also want to say congratulations to all of our graduates. You guys have done an incredible thing finishing school, and I hope you are all moving on and looking forward to your future. Congratulations to our teachers of the year and to our retirees. Um, I want to say congratulations to our track team, and a big thank you to the Wallaces who have put together an outstanding track program here. I'm very proud of that program. It's nice to see that. Um, and if you didn't, haven't been in the parking lot when track was going, you could not get a parking spot at all, so they've done a fantastic job. I'm looking forward to all the great things coming. Mr. Roper, welcome to the MC family. I look forward to your leadership style. It very much reminds me what I received in my career. That one team, one dream, one mentality is, is gonna take us very far, so I'm very much looking forward to that. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Walker?
Well, I too want to congratulate the Sensational Six. That's absolutely fabulous. You make us very proud. And congratulations to our teachers of the year and our retirees. Um, Ms. Kirkland had five of my six children, and when she moved from seven to eight and eight to seven, she missed Emily, and she should have had Emily. So, um, you know, she had five of my six, and I, I can't say enough about my love and admiration for her. Same with Ms. Lang. The one of my daughters that, um, Ms. Kirkland didn't have, Ms. Lang did have, and every day Emily came home and told me what shoes... came home and told me what shoes Ms. Lang was wearing. Not only what she learned, but she wore these fabulous heels every day, and Emily was just enamored with them. So that will always be a fond memory I have of her, besides her being a phenomenal teacher, so she'll be missed. Welcome, Ms. L, welcome to our family, and Mr. Roper, we are thrilled to have you here, and we look forward to working with you and accomplishing great things. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Well, I'm excited. I feel the energy. I know Mr. Walker does. This is the most I've ever heard you talk at all at the end.
Says a lot.
At the end of the conference, but that's okay. I want to go off first and want to congratulate, congratulate the track team for the things they put together, and also, I'm excited about the esport team also. I mean, they are, not because my son is on the team, but hear about it every day. But anyway, they're doing very well, though. I think they're in the championship round, or should be going to it soon. The graduating class, kudos to them. I mean, that is not an easy task. As many of us know, some of us make it look easy, but it's not as easy as it sounds or as it seems. So, congratulations to them. Sensational Six, amazing. The things they put together, those AP classes, doing enrollment, all the things you hope a child would do, they did it, and they are on the way onto a successful life. The Teachers of the Year, congratulations to all of them. Ms. X, Ms. Kirkland, Ms. Richard, all these teachers I have spent time with and known. And also, I will miss Ms. Lang. And Ms. Beals, I will miss you also, believe it or not.
I'll miss you all, too.
You know, we had some good times.
She ain't going nowhere yet.
I know, but she will.
That's right.
Mr. Roper?
Yeah, sure, wait.
Welcome to the family, and I mean that wholeheartedly. I know I have a strong feeling that it's gonna be something great, so I know you're not gonna let us down. Who would I miss on this list? Because I got a long list I didn't know if I would be seeing here. Oh, Ms. L? That's you. I ain't, I ain't gonna forget about you, okay? Also to you, welcome to the family. Okay, I didn't want to, I made sure I wrote your name in big letters on here, okay? But welcome, seriously, because you are a much-needed asset, as well as the superintendent, and everybody know how my family is, down to the custodian, lunchroom worker or whatever. Everybody's important process. We are a team, and that's a concept that we live by and believe. So, welcome to the family, and those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. McFadden? I'd like to begin by saying congratulations to Member Walker on his most recent graduating from the university. And I, I saw the umbrage you took when Mrs. Beal talked about the class of 2023 being the greatest class. I saw you, you know, it's, you know.
He's like, wait a minute.
I'd like to say congratulations to the Sensational Six. And as I was reading through the students' accomplishments and what they've done, and I saw, they didn't, like I said, last year they were called the Fantastic Five or something. And I looked at all of these students, all of them were in dual enrollment, AP, they're going, you know, they're graduating from high school with, you know, with double degrees, and so I said, this is sensational. So I said, hey, they didn't get a name, so I'm just gonna coin them the Sensational Six, because what I saw and read, what these, these six young people do is truly sensational. Particularly, they started in high school during COVID, when we were sometime in class, sometime out of class, sometime remote, sometime in class, one, two days a week, so for them to continue to achieve, it's sensational, and they all were in double, you know, enrolled in dual program simultaneously, and it's just, you know, they did a fantastic, they represented themselves great. They, I think they're gonna be great representatives of the Mount Clemens Community School District, and I wish all the Sensational Six well, as well as the entire graduating class of 2023. We wish you all well. We realize that to make it to graduation day is a feat within itself. There are so many negative influences out there that take students away from school, that distract them from being all they can be and being the best they can be. So those students who do matriculate and graduate, it's, it's a, it's a great honor. And sad to say, in 2023, but there are some students that are graduating on June the 2nd as a Mount Clemens High School graduate that are the first high school graduates in their family. So that speaks volume, wherever they fall in the pecking order of the graduating class, that they did graduate, and that, that's a, and some of them, that's an outstanding achievement alone, just to be able to graduate. So congratulations to the entire class of 2023. Good luck to the lady, lady bathers and the battling bathers this Saturday as they compete in the regional track meet. They've had a successful season thus far, and we wish them well at the regionals. If you place in the top three in the relays in the regional, you, you advance to state. If you place in the top four or meet certain timelines, you qualify for state in the individual events. So if you, if you ever drove by the marquee, you see several Mount Clemens athletes, track athletes named running across the, the marquee for accomplishments they've done in, in most recent track meets, and those students that are, will be competing in the regional championship on this weekend, and say, congratulations to, to those young people as they compete in the regionals. What more can I say about our Teachers of the Year that my colleagues have not already, haven't already said, and I, and I again expressed that, that this was, the board didn't elect these, these teachers. The superintendent or the H R director did not select these teachers. They were selected from among their peers, and when your peers think highly of you, that, that's quite of an accomplishment. So to Ms. X, Ms. Kirkland, and Ms. Richards, congratulations, even though I didn't have any of them as teachers. They, they've been doing outstanding work during their tenure here in the Mount Clemens Community School District, and we say congratulations to them. To Ms. Lang on her retirement, we say congratulations to you for your retirement, and whatever you do, I'm pretty sure that you're not just gonna sit at home. Matter of fact, you might even come out of retirement like somebody that's to my left has done on a couple of occasions, because they found out retirement wasn't all that it stacked out to be the first or second or third time around, so they came back and gave it another kick at the cat. So congratulations to Ms. Lang and her pending graduate, I mean, retirement. Also to Superintendent Beals, again, I stayed, I don't know how long you're gonna stay retired, but knowing you, I don't believe it's gonna be very long.
July.
It won't be very long. You may not go, you know, you might not take on the full-scale responsibility of being a superintendent, but I'm sure that, that you're gonna continue to do something that, that promotes student, student growth, and some, I'm pretty sure we'll see you somewhere else in, in an employment field, some consulting something, because I, I just don't see you sitting at home. I, I just don't see you.
No, me either.
So, congratulations, and I don't see, might keep letting you stay home all the time either, so congratulations on, on your upcoming retirement. What did I miss? Mr. Roper, welcome aboard. We, we look forward to working with you, because we are a team. Team of eight that sits around the board table, but it's a whole team of the whole village of the Mount Clemens Community School District. So we, we look forward to your leadership, your stewardship, and, and working with you, and keep transcending, brother. And I noticed my colleagues this evening, when I talked about that I did a great job in representing the board as a designate to vote on behalf of this board, I got a bunch of backlash. Oh, somebody's tooting their horn, but when other colleagues around the table was tooting their horn today, nobody said a word. I, you know, what is the conspiracy against me this evening, you know? I take all the hits on behalf of the board. This is how my colleagues treat me, but I know it's all out of love, and I, I appreciate that. I hope to see everybody at graduation on June the 2nd. It's, it's gonna be in the field, 5:30, 6 o'clock, and if it rains, you know, we gotta fingers crossed, we, we, our alternate is to go into the gym, possibly.
Or the cafeteria.
Never had the cafeteria before, but hey, this is the first time for everything.
Yep.
Hopefully, we, hopefully we have good weather.
The weather's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, hopefully we have good weather, and we, we can do it outside. And so I, I always look forward to the graduation and watching the smiles of those students as they walk across the stage, looking into the stand to see the proud, the pride of their parents, grandparents, caregivers, girlfriends, boyfriends, all their family members as, as they see their, their students walk across the stage to receive that diploma as a graduating senior from the Mount Clemens Community School District. Once a bather, always a bather. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Call roll, please. See, y'all, see, Ms. L, she messing up already.
No. I started cleaning up.
Messing up already. Oh, yeah, eating and stuff and not paying attention.
My apologies.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries, meeting adjourned.